I'd like to welcome you here this evening. We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting. But before we begin, I would invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Jim Reed will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we ask you to be with our country and our city. Let us make the decisions that you would have us to make for our citizens. Be with all of our citizens, all of our employees, and just be with us, be with us all this evening. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. These things we pray in Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim. All right, we do have large print. Either Bill or Gina will have them. Who's Bill you got them? Large print agendas, if that would be helpful to anyone, feel free to get one. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, and I'll ask our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
There.
Erskine.
Kathy's there. Let the record show that our councilperson, Jay Cox, is here. She will be joining us momentarily. She had a technical issue with her iPad. She's trying to get straightened out. All right. Before we go to comments from citizens, I'm gonna take the opportunity here, I'm gonna ask Ron Finley to come. Ron, it was brought to my attention after the agenda was prepared that of some, something going on with code enforcement and Ron's, and some volunteers, and Ron, I'd like for, we'd like for him to be recognized. So, Ron, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. You know, when I interviewed for this position, one of the main things that I was concerned about, I was seeing some people that were being cited into court that I think that we could do better as far as not having to send them to court. One of the first things I done was reached out to some of the school resource officers. And with their help, I've, Matt Ray, I need to recognize Matt Ray because he's played a big part in getting these volunteers to help with some special projects that needed help for elderly people. I'd like to thank Ryan Matston. He's a teacher at Harbor High School. I think some of his students that were supposed to be here tonight actually kinda got shy and didn't show up, he said, because they were concerned that we're gonna be here for, I think, a long period of time. But I've got like ten volunteers on this last project that has helped, and I'd like to recognize them. Paola Silas, Kevin Mendez, Emily Miranda, Samantha Alenas, Giselle Estrada, Gabrielle Mendoza, Juan Aguilar, Lupeta Delatori, Romero Fieros, Emily Martinez, and like I said, I'd like to thank Ryan Matston here. He's been a big help, and I tell you what, some of the elderly people that we've helped this summer has been very appreciative, and it's been nice not having to cite those people into court.
That's great.
Like I've seen in the future. But special thank you to Matt and Officer Matt Ray. Matt couldn't be here tonight. I tried to get him to be here, but he is at the volleyball game at Harbor High School.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and please pass along to your students our appreciation. Come on up and...
He's got a few words he'd like to say.
Yeah, yeah, come right on up here.
I don't have much, but anyway, I had a real special moment. There were ten students, and I thought maybe five of them would show up, but I think they did get shy, and it's, you know, it's their free time. But I just wanted, can I put a little face to kinda what, can I pass out?
Sure.
This'll, it'll be real quick, the kind of a face of what's going on. I'm trying to create a student-led volunteerism at the school. There's so many volunteer hours that our students need through Spanish Honor Society.
Hey, Brian, I wanna be sure, this is on TV? I wanna be sure everybody hears this, okay?
Yeah, pardon me.
Yeah.
I'm trying to promote volunteerism at Harbor, and it involves students that might not have been engaged otherwise. This is, students participating here are mostly an ESL population, and I'm giving them opportunity to earn community service hours, get involved in the community, especially like maybe for scholarship applications, just getting plugged in, because it's hard for them to find ways to get plugged in, be aware of something. So, we've created this organization, this is student-led, they've made the flyers, and like I said, I wanted them to come and present, but they didn't come. But anyway, just hopefully we can continue to participate and partner with the city to do some community service, and we appreciate the opportunity. And Ron, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, yeah. This is great, and we appreciate that very much, and please pass that along to your students. And when they get their nerve up, there's really nothing to be afraid of. They could sure, they could sure come and let the council thank them personally, all right? Anybody else have anything else? Okay, thanks again. Ron, thanks for bringing that up. All right, we're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. Council will hear brief comments from our citizens, and we ask that you keep your, you do keep your comments no more than five minutes. Please understand that the council won't act upon anything you have to say tonight, so this is a time for you to address the council concerning any issue that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. If there are no changes or additions, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
If none so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All right. Procedural motions, item six, what's your pleasure, council?
A and B.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for items A and B. Roll call, please.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
While Patsy's coming for item seven, something I meant to mention at the beginning, and I've gotten to talk to most of you about it, but in case someone's here for item eight C, that's authorized, resolution authorizing sale of property, I've suggested, I'm suggesting to the council that we table that tonight, because we don't have, I think it would be beneficial, I know I would like to see it, and I think the council would like to see also the lease agreement. Ernest contacted the buyers, and the lease agreement was not quite ready, so if it's all right with y'all, we'll table that issue and...
Mayor, you want to table that to the next meeting, or?
Yes, to the next meeting.
I move it be tabled to the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, that'll be October 9th. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, Denise.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Hear ye eight zero.
All right, thank you for doing that, and we bring that up now because we, if anyone was here for that issue, we didn't want them to have to sit longer than they needed to if that was the case. Item seven, Planning Commission report recommendations. Patsy?
The first item is a rezoning request to rezone .37 acre, .37 acres located, I lost my location, located at 1805 Steel Avenue. The request is to rezone the property from low-density, single-family residential district SF2 to low-density multifamily residential district MF2. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads in ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 to low-density multifamily residential district MF2 and declaring an emergency.
Is that a duplex? Is that what that is?
Yes. Single-family, single-family and duplexes, same four units per acre, that's the only difference, is it?
Is there duplex in the house?
No.
Or they want to build a duplex?
They want to be able to build duplexes, and in SF2, you can't build a duplex, but in MF2, you can build a single-family house or a duplex.
Would there just be one on this property?
I think we're replating that lot with the ability to put two on there.
It's actually 1605, not 1805. It's correct in the ordinance, you just said 1805.
Oh, okay. I didn't put my glasses on.
And both duplexes would front Steel Avenue?
Yes.
Or there'd be a...
No, they would both front Steel Avenue.
What's the...
But it's the same density, it's four units per acre, it's just a difference between a duplex and a single-family.
Is all the surrounding property SF1?
SF2.
SF2, it's all single-family?
It's all single-family, had four units per acre.
Why would not this be spot zoning?
Well, it's not a spot zone in that the density is the exact same. It's just allowing a different type of mixture of housing, which would allow single-family and duplexes. If you think about some of the older subdivisions in town, like off of Carlton in that area over there, there's duplexes in those mixed in with single-family, sometimes they're on the ends of the houses, sometimes they were in the middle. There's other locations in the city where we use that, but it's the same density. It just provides for a different type of housing in an area already.
Patsy, what can be an MF2? We understand what's being proposed tonight.
Only single-family or duplexes.
Or duplexes.
That's the only two options that you have, right.
Well, I'll give you an example of where it didn't work, and that's on the corner of Emma and West End Street.
Yes.
Emma and West End, where that duplex was put in on the corner, yeah.
Yep.
And I mean, it's the same density as if they'd put two single-family houses there, it's just they put a duplex.
Those around Carlton are either on one end or another, I don't know of any that are right in the middle.
There, I don't know that there is in that neighborhood. I know over off of Falcon on the north side of there, there's some duplexes mixed in in some of that subdivision up in there. There's also some on the west side. I mean, I didn't go back and look all over town to see where the examples were.
There's a few on McRae.
Yeah, there's a few on McRae.
That are mixed in with the single-family.
Yep.
Does there ever duplex on that street, three ounces down?
Okay.
Well, how would that have happened? Would that have been before we had it zoned, or?
It probably was when it was all zoned R1 that allowed duplexes and single-family at the time, when we upgraded all the zoning and went to SF2.
That's a real old street.
That's a real old subdivision.
I was gonna ask when the majority of the homes on this street probably would've been, okay.
Yeah. And a lot, and you know, way back then, it was residential only.
Yeah, new construction on an older street.
I mean, it had an R-zone, and it had a C-zone when we first started, some of those stuff.
What was the vote of the Planning Commission? Do you remember?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I don't think there was any, I don't think there was any opposition to it.
Do you know what the frontage is on that lot?
The lot itself, I think it's 106...
Couldn't be over 125.
It's like 98, about 145.
98, yeah.
Yeah.
So that allows two side-by-side duplexes?
They're gonna have to ask for a variance in order to be able to put two side-by-side. Now, they can do two-story and do one duplex and one single-family, or they're asking for a variance, which will come before the Planning Commission next.
Why don't y'all come up here so you can be heard by folks watching, in case there are more questions, or if you have got something you'd like to add?
Yes, my name is Charlie Adams, and what we're trying to do is just put one duplex on that lot. The house that was there had burnt back in 1990, and it's just overgrown, looked like a jungle. There's houses down through there, it's in pretty disrepair, because they are older houses, and some of these older neighborhoods in Springdale need to be updated. It's really not cost-effective, you couldn't get your money out of putting a new, nicer, single-family home in that large lot, unless we split the lot and put two houses. But right now, duplexes are really hard to come by in Springdale.
Sure. Okay.
Is there any way to restrict that property, Patsy, to one duplex?
Nope.
Well, I think the size, the requirements of the lot will be where they can't get more than that.
I guess the restriction would be if they couldn't get a variance on...
Right, and that, yes.
On the setbacks.
In an MF2 zone, the lot sizes are for a single-family home, it's 80-foot of frontage, 10,000 square feet. For a duplex, it's 90-foot of frontage, 12,000 square feet.
And who grants variances on something like that?
Planning Commission grants variances, no appeal to the city council.
Those would be variances, I'm gonna step out here a little bit, but those would probably be variances if...
These are the lots you're getting variances on, right?
That our fire department would oppose.
Okay, my fault. They have another project they're getting variances on, it's not this one.
Okay, so your plan is to build one duplex?
We got too many projects going on.
There's no variance needed.
Okay, all right.
Because it's now seven, and it's 90-foot.
Yeah, 90-foot of frontage.
135.
They have another project that they want to put houses on that we were talking about this week, and they applied for a variance for that, got the wrong one, too many projects going on at once.
We have a, what's your pleasure, council?
I'm gonna go ahead and move this ordinance pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this besides the property owners?
Was there, was there anyone at the Planning Commission that came concerning this?
In opposition?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No. Yeah, and it passed, we didn't have any opposition expressed by anyone, and they are all notified by certified mail.
Right.
All that stuff was taken care of as required.
Okay. Denise?
Watson.
No.
Overton.
No.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
No.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Carries eight zero.
The next one is also a conditional use for a mobile vending unit to be placed at 1108 Southwest End Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of this one as well. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use for Karina Chavez at 1108 Southwest End Street," is set forth in ordinance number 4030 with the following conditions. The parking and loading areas need to be identified and marked, may not operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signal or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. No sound devices that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Sites to remain clean and free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of the business with all trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand to be collected and deposited into trash container."
With the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions with the council?
Patsy, I've got a question. The first condition was different, there's an added condition on this one?
Yes, because they need to identify what area they're gonna pave up close to the vending unit itself.
What area of the lot?
They're putting it in the corner, right in the corner to the east of the building that's on the north end, and there's a grassy area, they've gotta make sure that they have adequate paving to get to that location. And that's why it's still on this conditional use. They won't get their approval for their business license till we know that's been completed.
Is there adequate paving on this property on West End Street?
There is to operate it, assuming that depending on where they put it and they pave up to that location itself. That corner's pretty wide open with a lot, not a lot of paving in it.
Which one had the additional requirement? This one?
This one.
Okay, where is that? Parking and loading areas identified, is that what you mean?
Uh-huh. They need to be identified on their plans, so we know exactly when they're, where they're gonna be when they go out to get their business license.
And do we have a requirement for paved areas on...
Yes, they have to have three paved parking spaces in order to be able to operate a mobile vending that doesn't conflict with whatever else is going on at that location.
That can be used for customers besides the mobile unit?
Right, yes. And a lot of times, we get them in the middle of a parking lot that already has enough parking that's paved. This one is a little bit different, because that corner's not paved.
This is very minor, but on the parking and loading areas identified, you said marked. I mean, can somebody technically just put up a sign that says, "This is the parking," or do we need to add the word marked?
It has to be, it has to be paved. It has to be, they have to...
And painted?
They have to show us where it's gonna be, and the parking spaces have to be marked.
The spaces would be painted?
The spaces would be paved and marked with stripes, yes.
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't say marked on here. Do we need to add that?
We can't, I mean, I think we all know what that means, but we can add that.
Somebody I thought might put up a sign that says, "Parking here," and that'd be adequate.
No, we, when we review and, and inspect these kind of things, everybody knows that's what we mean, but we can change that language and add it to it, sure.
Okay. Anyone in the audience need to comment on this? All right. Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Hear ye eight zero.
Okay, anyone in the audience need to comment on this? All right. Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The next request is a request for a waiver of a sidewalk in connection with a single-family dwelling being built at 4050 North 56th Street. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver, which would be option number one. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to share assignment in connection with 4050 North 56th Street, a single-family dwelling." Part of the discussion with this one for the waiver is, there is not a determine, determination yet as to where 56th Street's going to be relocated in that area. So I felt it was, we just couldn't give her enough information to put one in now and not know that it wouldn't have to be taken out, or something would have to be done later when we extend 56th Street further north, so that's why the recommendation for waiver, and we don't even know when that's gonna happen just yet.
And when it does happen, as Patsy said...
I move this resolution pass with option one.
Okay.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second? I'll stop right there.
It's not broken, don't fix it.
No need to beat a dead horse, is it? Let's, would anyone, anyone need to comment on this, or any more questions with council? Okay, Denise?
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The last item is a request by Southwest 49 LLC that is the owner of the tract of land that's adjacent to the southern boundary of the ballpark area, Southwest Springdale District Overlay. They're asking for that to be added on, and you can see that little piece that juts down between 56th Street and 49. Parkway Plaza subdivision, commercial subdivision has been, preliminary plat has been approved for that. Highlands College, large-scale development plan for that, so they're asking to be made part of the Southwest District Overlay. And Planning Commission held a public hearing, they recommend approval of this amendment to the ordinance. The title of the ordinance reads, "In ordinance amending chapter 130 zoning ordinance, article 12, ballpark area, Southwest Springdale District Overlay, section 1.3 boundaries of the Springdale Cut of Ordinances, declaring an emergency and further purposes." What it does is amends the boundary description that's set out in section 1.3A, and then it replaces the map with the one that you see on the screen.
With the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments with the council? Anyone in the audience on this issue?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight, zero.
Alright, thank you. Item eight, Finance Committee Reports and Recommendations, Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met last Monday night and brings forward two resolutions. First resolution is item eight A. It reads, "A resolution amending the twenty eighteen budget of the City of Springdale Buildings Department." It's had to do with, um, the Buildings Department running out of money and contract labor and there were some additional monies available from the franchise tax revenues. And it would move sixty thousand dollars to additional contract labors for the Building Department. The committee forwarded that resolution to the council with the recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Carries eight, zero.
Second resolution is item eight B. And the title of that resolution is, "A resolution amending the twenty eighteen budget of the City of Springdale Police Department." That recu- that resolution was also forwarded to the council with the recommendation for approval. Did you wanna speak to that, Chief?
We're, uh, we're asking the council to allow us to move twelve thousand five hundred dollars from our drug seizure fund to our budget to replace a canine that we retired back in the spring.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Carries eight, zero.
Thanks, Chief. Alright, next we'll move to item nine. That's Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee Reports and Recommendations, Chairman Jim Reed. Jim?
Uh, first one is an ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas located at two twenty-two Rhodes Avenue and to declare an emergency. Tom told me a while ago that I believe that one's being torn down by the owner at this time.
Yes, it is, it's being tore down. He's, like I said, last week I had these pictures to show you and it showed what it looks like. It's in piles today. It should be taken care of, so there's be no reason to vote for you guys to have me tear it down. If he doesn't get it done in a satisfactory manner by our ordinance deadline, then I'll deal with him to the court. So, but he is actively working on it today. I went over and took these pictures, so.
Okay.
So is the best thing to just let this ordinance?
I say let it go, yes, it's gone now. I mean, he, he's gonna have to clean it up by ordinance within thirty days and he'll have it done, I think, by the end of this week, so.
We have to officially withdraw it?
Just, no motions?
It'd be better to have it on a record. Would somebody, uh, we'd entertain a motion then to?
The table or withdraw?
Just to withdraw it from the agenda, just so we have a record of what?
Or moved? Which is to withdraw it from our agenda.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one's an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the structure demolition.
This was for that structure at one thousand Lowell Road. It came in at more than twenty thousand dollars. We brought it, brought it to your attention. We had three bids, they varied about ten thousand dollars from the lowest to the highest. And so I had those bids and I have them here if you wanna look at them. So basically with your blessing, I'll give it to the lowest bidder, but it's twenty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
Move the pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
No.
Overton?
Yes.
Carries seven, one, it has an emergency clause, I believe, 'cause you wanna get going.
Yeah, I'm ready, anytime, it's.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Emergency clause carries eight, zero.
And the next one's an ordinance ordering the raising, demolition, and removal of certain residential structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas located at six oh two South Cleveland Street and to declare an emergency and for other purposes. This item was forwarded from the eight twenty eighteen city council meeting.
And Mr. Reed, on this one here, if you remember, I shared with the mayor an email that I had. There's a property preservation company that I have been in contact with for a couple of times and they've always, oh, it's occupied. The house is clearly not occupied, they don't even have utilities to it. The owner is, it's been the same ownership of this property since two thousand and seven and I just, I printed it today, he's still the same owner. And then I also had Ron's department provide me some information. We have mowed this property really starting in eleven nine of fifteen. We've been mowing this property continuously. For some reason, there was a gap in the year of sixteen. I don't know if neighbors took it upon themselves or it just got to the point where we just didn't mow it. But he's provided me a list of, you know, fifteen, sixteen times they've mowed this property. I went over there today because I, I shared with some people last time I spoke about this property. You know, I don't like everything to get tore down and you would, you would hope people would come forward and take care of their properties. But of these pictures you're seeing going around, I took those today. I've kinda had a change of heart because I believe a vagrant is staying in that par- in that house. There's a doggy door, if you were to go and look at the back of that, you can look inside and see where the inside, like a safety shield is put, has been pushed away. That doggy door almost allow a person my size to get in there, believe it or not. And there are some pictures where I'm showing where a bi-folds doors are being put over bedroom windows and when you look through the back door, I can see like a sleeping bag and a cup. So, and then I showed also one where I could grab the trim and it's termites holding hands, it's fallen down. So it's your pleasure, I'll do whatever you want, um, but I do have it in front of you. I mean, we've made every contact we can and we're to the point, we gotta do something.
I'll move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Well, these pictures are certainly not the worst-looking pictures that I've seen other than the one with the termites sighting. Um, how long, how long do you think it's been vacant?
Um, I, I've been dealing with this property. How long I've been dealing with this property? Well, everything I brought over here, I missed that one, I guess. But it's been at least, it's been at least five years that property's been empty.
Vacant for five years?
Yes, sir. We've been mowing it since fifteen.
And, and you never hear from, who'd you say you sent your notices to?
I sent it to the official person who owns it and they live in Los Angeles.
They never call and say, "Hey, thanks for mowing our yard" or anything, huh?
No, no.
Thank you for mowing my yard.
So, and like I said, it shows, you know, 'cause even Ron had asked me today, he thought maybe it had changed hands and I pulled this, it's printed today, it's still the same owner for eleven years.
If we demolish it, we still have to mow it, right?
We're still gonna have to mow it, that's right.
They're laying in it.
But at least we won't have potential vagrants living in it.
Right.
And I'm not, it's secure today, there's not a broken window or an open window. I checked all of them today. But I, I do now think that somebody is in that house at night at least that's going through that doggy door film. And that's, and they're wanting privacy whilst, they're, the only windows are covered is that northwest windows are covered by bi-fold doors. Somebody's in there at night, I'm sure. And there's no electric to it, there's no water to it.
There's no utilities at all?
No, sir.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause pass.
Second.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Both the ordinance and emergency clause, carry eight, zero.
And again, I appreciate the council's support in this difficult matter, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item ten, uh, I'll turn these next three items actually over to Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is a resolution to levy Washington County Avalorum Taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Alright, Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Carries eight, zero. Next item is a resolution to levy Benton County Avalorum Taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Carries eight, zero. Item twelve is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. Properties located at five sixteen Crutcher and six oh one West Huntsville.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Anyone in the room need to speak to this? Okay, no further questions? Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
First clause be adopted.
Second.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry eight, zero.
Alright. Item thirteen, uh, discussion of rescheduling the next committee meeting. Uh, our meet, our meeting is scheduled for next Monday, October first. The majority of the council will be, uh, gone that, that Monday. So we need to see, do you wanna meet later next week? Do you wanna wait until the Monday bef- the next week, the Monday before council? We could meet Wednesday, Thursday of next week. It'd be better, in my opinion, and I know that we don't, we don't like to meet the night before council with committee, especially if there's something we need to forward to that council meeting. So what, what are you thinking?
I prefer Wednesday.
I would agree with Joe.
I'm fine with Wednesday.
Is that okay?
Wednesday's good.
Good. So we'll, committees, uh, will meet upstairs next Wednesday. That'd be October third, right? At five thirty. Thank you for doing that and, uh, I've asked Melissa to just briefly demonstrate something on our website that I think will be of real interest, not only to you, but it'll be great for you to be able to direct people to when they have questions concerning our bond issue.
Alright, so during the, and prior to the election, we had a spot on our website to help educate people on what the bond is and what would be on the ballot. So those pages have been updated to talk about now what the projects are